All right, gentlemen. Welcome. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission. Today is January the twenty first of two thousand and twenty one. It is six o'clock and I am calling this meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Erasmo Villarreal?
Present.
Jorge Dominguez? Commissioner Jorge Dominguez?
Maybe he's muted.
He might be muted.
I'm present.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Rafael Duñez? Rafael Duñez? Commissioner Abraham Lugo?
Present.
Commissioner Johnny Narváiz?
Present.
Commissioner Raúl Ugale?
Present.
Commissioner Larry Divalina?
Here.
Commissioner Carlos Flores?
Present.
And Commissioner Jose Reyes?
Present.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, you do have quorum.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving right along. Next item that we have is consideration of the approval of the minutes of December the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty.
So move.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Advice?
That right? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Next item, any citizens' comments at this point, Kirby? We'll wait two minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And just an opportunity to remind everyone that if you are not speaking to mute your mics, it really helps preserve the audio quality, even if you can't hear it on your end. It helps for the public and for their recording. Also, while we're here, I'll say a little more in director's comment and let her introduce herself, but we have a new staff member you might know, Amanda Fermina. And she is one of our planners that recently joined us and will be working on the current zoning part for now with Rafa, assisting Rafa with the plating process and maybe later working on zoning cases as well. And also not here, but but newly assigned as our zoning Board of Adjustment and Historic Preservation Officer is Vanessa Guerra. She moved over from the IPO. And will be working on the zoning cases. So you'll see her in the future at these meetings. Have not received any calls from the public. If we do, Amanda will let us know.
Thank you very much. Moving right along. Public hearings. All right, we're going into item five A. And the first public hearing we have is amending the zoning ordinance to the city of Laredo by rezoning lot fourteen, block two, Jacobman Road, unit six, located at seventy-one twenty-six, Rosson Lane, from B four to B three.
Commissioner, I'm, may I suggest the, the item that our building director is here for, if you choose to?
I'm sure so, yeah, that's true. Let me have a motion from somebody to move up. Item number twelve A. Motion. Do we have a second?
Second, Duñez.
Duñez, seconds. All right. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we're moving. Item twelve A. Item twelve A. Discussing a recommendation regarding ordinance to the city of Laredo amending the Land Development Code, chapter twenty-four, article five, section twenty-four, eighty-three point nine, to provide that money in lieu trees will satisfy fifty percent of the total planting requirement. To provide that funds received may be used for the purpose of purchasing and installing landscaping and that the planting of eligible trees in or near city parks or public right of ways and to provide that the cost per tree shall be determined by the Parks and Recreation Board. That this ordinance shall be cumulative, given and severity clause providing for publication and declaring an effective date. All right, Kirby, who's going to make this presentation?
Arturo Garcia, our billing director, will. Before he goes into it, I just wanted to remind the planning commission and the public that our, our charter requires that any ordinance change which has an impact to development must first come to the planning commission for a recommendation to city council. And that is why he's here today. Arturo?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and, and Commissioner. Arturo Garcia with your billing department. Yes, council directors to bring an item related to section twenty-four point eighty-three, which is trees and shrubs out of the, out of the existing land development code. What council is asking us to look at was to look at increasing the in lieu of percentage from thirty percent, which is the current allowed amount of our, of our code to fifty percent. Now, the purpose of this is just to obviously increase the availability. This is obviously optional and voluntary. This is not a mandate for the construction industry or for the development industry in industrial areas. It's just a vague, providing for the opportunity for it to be expanded so that they want to choose to, to do that option, they can do so. Obviously, we hadn't had a fee established for this. As far as I've known, from what I've asked previous billing officials, there, there has, this section has not been used as far as they can recall. But hopefully this change will allow for that incentive for it to be used. And that, that fund source that, that will be created by this fee will obviously go to establishing trees and parks and city right of ways, as the, as it's mentioned earlier. I did have a presentation, Kirby. I don't know if you, you showed it or not.
Let's see it.
There were three slides, Kirby.
Go ahead and let's, let's see the presentation.
This is it, Arturo. I just changed the format.
Okay, well, basically what's to sum it up is just, we're just increasing it from thirty to fifty percent. It's optional and voluntary. It's money in lieu of trees. The Parks Board actually met yesterday and they established a five hundred dollar fee for it. They also recommended a strong recommendation that it just be allowed in industrial areas. And, 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 and that's their, their recommendation to, to council. The five hundred dollar fee by ordinance is the body that establishes a fee. So that, that will be the, the fee that, that will be utilized as a in lieu of fee. And obviously, we're seeking the P N Z's support with this and any recommendations based on this. Right now, the current requirements for parking is one tree for every ten parking spaces. Can you go to that one? Over fifteen and then, you know, the, the trunk permeable area. So this might be something that might be of interest for industrial developments, especially now with a, a lot of the development growing and the, and the, and the more industrial developments that are north, in North Laredo, North Laredo.
All right.
That's it, sir.
Okay, all right. Let me ask you, the, the Parks Board is recommending a five hundred dollar per tree fee. Is that correct?
Yes, by, by, by the land development code, the body that establishes the fee for the in lieu of, or for the in lieu of fee is the Tree Board, but since the Tree Board was decommissioned, that those duties fell to the Parks Board. So they actually met yesterday on the same subject so we could have a fee established. And they decided on five hundred dollars.
Well, let me ask you. Doesn't that seem excessive? Five hundred dollars per tree?
Actually, in my opinion, sir, to be honest with you, it's a strong savings because you have not only the, the tree itself, the labor to plant it and the maintenance costs associated to, to them and also the area that it's utilizing in terms of the area. Especially if it's an industrial area where you're going to have like trucks or, and you might not need, need the landscaping. So it actually is a benefit. So the five hundred dollars, in my opinion, is actually okay. It's not that bad. I actually would have thought it would be more, but they decided on five hundred dollars.
Well, let me ask you this. Why didn't, why, why didn't they also recommend a caliper size for each tree?
Because the caliper size is something that you would need. The, the caliper size, sir, is actually by, said by, by code. So that's, that's actually established in the, in the landscaping code.
And right now, it's what, three inches or two inches?
It's two inches like Kirby just mentioned, so.
Well, that's why, you know, I'm saying if I, if, you know, if you're going to take a two inch tree and you're telling me it's to plant a two inch tree is not going to cost you five hundred dollars. Because nobody's going to go ahead and say, let me blow five hundred dollars. They're going to go ahead and say it's, you know, five hundred dollars per tree. I, I just, I don't know. I, I think
Commissioner Villarreal?
Accomplish a real beautification because I know what you're trying to do here. It makes sense to me. Obviously, you go to other cities, you see these real nice industrial parks, you know, beautifully landscaped and everything else. I agree with that. I just, I don't know. I don't have a really good stance. And I'm going to open it up to the commission. I know we have some people that have developed, like George, Larry, there's some guys that know a little bit about this stuff and I'm going to ask them to kind of like give us some input on that, what they feel about that fee.
Commissioner, if I could add just a little bit of additional information. Other cities that have this fee, the fee ranges, five hundred is on the low end. It ranges from a couple thousand down to about five hundred. When you consider the cost of not only the tree itself of a two inch caliper tree, but also the cost of the irrigation, the cost of, you know, the curb, the curbing typically around an area that's, you're making in the asphalt, all those things considered.
Okay.
It's something developers typically take advantage of because they, they get more back.
Okay.
Actually, the cost.
Now, you're talking about adding a, you're talking about adding an irrigation system to the whole thing here, okay? Is that what you're talking about?
Irrigation is.
You see, a lot of that stuff is not spelled out anywhere. I mean, you know, I looked at this thing and I'm going, it was a five hundred dollars for a tree, but now when you're talking is, okay, but the planting of the tree requires that, you know, you have an irrigation system to them because that makes a lot of sense. So it won't dry out on you.
That's required by ordinance. You're required to irrigate the trees.
Under what ordinance?
No, there's no, that's, no, that's incorrect.
There's no ordinance.
You don't have, you don't have to irrigate, Kirby.
No. So that's why I'm saying, where does that, where does that spell out? Because people are going to fight you on that if you don't have it spelled out where it says, you know, this five hundred dollar fee that we're suggesting includes blah, 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 blah. It's a better idea to spell it out.
Chairman, I'm not sure, I'm not sure we're, this is purely voluntary and optional.
And I think, I think that.
This, this is, in other words, there's, when, when they come in with a set of plans, obviously, we're going to tell them your, your, your amount of trees associated with your parking space is X amount of trees. The ordinance allows them to make that financial or business decision. Now, it, it, it currently exists, so it's, it's not something that's non-existent. They, they're currently allowed thirty percent in lieu of. We don't have an established fee up to this point. That was yesterday. And, and all that the council is asking to do is to expand that from thirty percent to fifty percent. They can still choose to use up to thirty percent or, or twenty percent, whenever they decide to, business-wise. But that's a business decision for the person or the, the business that's actually doing this construction or development. We're not, we're not asking them to, it's not a mandatory thing. It's an optional voluntary thing. If they want to use the landscaping instead, they can put the landscaping. There's no requirement telling them that they have to give us fifty percent of, of that cost.
Okay, now let me ask you this. And I, I might have missed it when I read the ordinance. Can you put the ordinance on, on, on the screen?
Yes, I just wanted to show you our, our.
I saw it.
We do have irrigation requirements. Now, how well we do it enforcing that is another question, but it is in the ordinance that they're required to irrigate.
Yeah, but see, that doesn't say anything about the public right of way.
No, yeah, correct.
See, the ordinance, when that ordinance was written, that was written for, you know, not the public right of way. Okay.
Kirby, can you, I, I had the existing ordinance on there. Can you show that slide? I have it if you don't have it.
I, I'm just trying to see how, how you, because you're saying it's going to be an option and I, I get that. I think that's a good option. But how, I don't know how you guys, I, I don't recall seeing the either or there.
The, this is optional. It, it's, 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 this is not a requirement. The, the current code says that you have to landscape X amount of trees based on your parking spaces. So
that I know.
That's required. So you can, at that point, you can, you can ask to, 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 to do.
It is that you're, you're creating under the land development code twenty-four point eight, three point nine. You're amending that, okay?
Yes, we're amending it. So it already exists.
Where are you saying? Maybe I, I just didn't see it. Where are you saying that this fifty percent is optional? Where does it say that?
It says.
It's in an earlier section, sir, that, that allows, that allows for this in lieu of.
Okay, so it says.
Twenty-three, six or seven. I mean, obviously, we don't have it here, but it's, it's in the code that, that allows this section to exist.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Jorge Dominguez.
Yeah.
The, I think this change, the way it is being, being brought out right now, it's in a real bad time. We have had a lot of increases on our cost for development. Not only on the, on the, on the infrastructure, but also on the cost of labor and materials. And adding to the preparation of the, of the, of the plans and the cost of paving, now bringing the, the fee of five hundred dollars. And I understand, Arturo, I know exactly what you're saying. I said, well, look, you still have to plant, but if you don't want to plant them, you pay five hundred dollars for each of the, of the trees. We already have that ordinance and increasing the thirty percent to fifty percent, that already creates a burden on the, the developer. I feel that this is not the right time for us to, to send a, a, a recommendation to city council. I think that we need to get together with the developers and try to get an input from the, from the building area, Mr. Chairman. Creating this right now and not being able to bring them face to face to try to get their input, input, I think is a real bad situation. Even though I understand, Arturo, I understand the option, what you were trying to explain, I think is good. It's just that we're bringing it at a real bad time. Us in the commission, not all of us are builders and they're not expected. Of course, that's the reason that we have different areas of the society being in the commission. But also we need to bring people from, from the building industry and industrial industry that can put an input there. That they can actually tell if, if approving five hundred dollars or increasing the thirty percent to fifty percent is appropriate. Right now, we're, we're kind of limited, Mr. Chairman, because we don't have any access. Actually, we can't really meet with anybody. The way we used to do it, we would get some of the developers and over coffee and, and discuss what would be brought to the, to the, to the board or the, or the, or the communications. We can't do it right now.
Well, I tell you what, what they're doing is, it's, this is an option. I mean, the original ordinance in the land development code stays as is. This is just an option for them, but they want to do it differently. That's all that is. They're bringing an option. That's all it is. I mean, they're adding an option on, this is coming from the city council saying, hey, guys, can you give them an option to do some things a little bit differently? And that's all this is. They don't have to. That's why I was asking, where in the ordinance is stated that this was an option? And they said it's, I believe Arturo said it's twenty-four point eighty-six. So it's an option. It's not something that's.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I don't have the, the land development code, but it's one of the previous sections in, in that same section.
Okay, so then it might be, so it's an option only. It's some, you know, a new option that they want to come up with and it's up to the developer to say, I'm going to use the same existing system that we have right now. Or I'm going to use this new system. It's up to the developer. So it's an option only. That's all it is at this point. Okay?
And, and, in other words, sir, if I can explain a little bit, like I mentioned to you, so, so let's say you're doing a develop, let's say you're doing an industrial building and you have a hundred spaces and you got to put ten, ten trees. It's a business decision to offer you that option. It already exists. You have a choice to pay the fee of thirty percent to the city to use for parks, for, for planting trees. So you would plant three, you would pay three trees, five hundred dollars each. So you don't have to worry about the bind of the tree, the maintenance of the tree, the installation of the tree, the irrigation for the tree. So whatever that savings is for you or that cost benefit to save that area in your parking lot or your construction site, that's a cost benefit decision for you to make whether you want that. And all the council wants to do is offer that, increase that. So you don't have to plant up any trees if you don't want to.
Mr. Garcia.
Basically increasing it.
Mr. Garcia.
Yes.
But what I'm hearing from you is that the cost per tree or the cost that it is, the five hundred dollars, that's, that's already set by whoever the Tree Board is, right?
Correct. Yeah, we, we're not coming up for permission on the fee. The fee is established by the Parks Board.
So, so what you're essentially doing is instead of only giving them a thirty percent bump, they get a fifty percent bump, but it's five hundred bucks per tree, no matter what.
Correct. And it's an option if they, if they.
So it's basically giving them a savings by only making, by giving them fifty percent credit instead of thirty percent credit.
Yeah, correct. So, so it's a business decision. It's a business decision. At the end of the day, do I want to have a pretty landscape facility and pay the additional dollars? Or do I want to, you know, you know, let's just not, let's freeze and, and get this taken away?
And it doesn't make this part clear is that the five hundred bucks, that's how much it's going to cost, period. And so what you're doing is actually giving the developer a break from the five hundred bucks because instead of them only getting thirty percent credit with a cash in lieu of trees, you're giving them a fifty percent credit. So it's actually a savings for developers, not an increase in tax. Now, if they don't like the five hundred bucks per tree, they got to go deal with the Tree Board or whomever is handling it now.
Correct.
Well, Commissioner Reyes, let me restate that a little more, make sure you're, you're on the same page. What they're changing is that your, your, your requirement for the number of trees that you have to plant in your development, in your parking lot, is determined on the size of your project, right?
No, 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 that, but, but, but the thing is, right now, you have to plant seventy percent of the trees, period.
No, you have not. You have to plant a hundred percent, but you can, right now, thirty percent of that, you can pay money in lieu of it. What we're trying to change is say, okay, instead of you have to plant a hundred trees, now you only have to, if you choose to, you can plant fifty and instead give cash of fifty times five hundred. So what they're doing is they're increasing the number of trees you, you may decide not to plant and instead give money for those numbers of trees.
Well, what, what, what it, what it says now, though, is if you pay cash, you only can do up to thirty percent. You only get up to thirty percent credit. Now it's giving you a fifty percent credit.
Correct.
It gives you, it gives you, you, you can plant less trees, but it just costs you per tree.
It's not necessarily credit. It's just, it allows you to, 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 to use more of the fee. More like, like Kirby just mentioned, thirty trees, you go from thirty trees to fifty trees. So, I mean, it's area, it's cost, it's landscaping. I mean, it's a business decision at the end of the day, somebody balancing out, do I want to plant extra trees? Or do I just want to, I got this opportunity and this option to, to save money potentially and save area of my pro, project site to not have trees and landscaping. Maybe I, I just want to print, put more cement so I can, a more parking area. I mean, so it's, it's just an option for a, a project developer or construction builder to, to decide that, so.
Yeah, Arturo, this is good. You're going for the planning commission to get a dry run on this because there's a there's a simpler way to explain this. And the biggest thing is this is not about a money saver to the developer. This is about the biggest thing, the biggest reason they'd want to do this is this is a tree requirement for their parking lot. And if they don't have to plant trees, they can have more parking. And the, the value of the parking is worth more to them than maybe a, a couple hundred bucks they might save in the long-term maintenance of not having that tree there. It's really about, okay, they can get ten more parking spots if they didn't have to plant all those trees. And in an industrial area, I mean, that's really important to them. So they'd rather have the parking spots. And we're giving that option and then we can put the trees somewhere where they actually get utilized, like a park. Because maybe you don't need the trees in, in the rest of your park. I know no one cares about the shade there. So that's the biggest thing. It's not really a money saver. It's about they can get more parking spots in their parking lot. Otherwise, like all of our parking lots in the city, there is a requirement to have landscaping in the parking lot.
I've got a question. Is there going to be some way to keep count of how many trees are planted with that money to confirm that that for every tree that's not planted where it's required under the ordinance for the, for the warehousing or whatever, industrial park, that there will be an accounting of that tree in some other place?
The short answer is no, not tree for tree, but the dollars will be accounted for. The public, public works or parks may be able to plant two trees instead of one because their costs might be different. So it's not about tree for tree. It's about the amount of money they're going to spend will be accounted for in terms of this money that was saved went here to this park and was used for, for landscaping and trees in the park, in that park. We'll be able to count for the money. I don't think for the trees, that's not the plan.
Commissioner Carlos, one of the reasons that, that we want the trees there is just so we can have beautiful areas and I, I have always emphasized that the, the developer should be able to comply with the amount of trees planted. And that was the idea. The idea is not to have areas with a bunch of parking, but rather to have areas with parking, the green spaces. And, and this, if it's the purpose, because you're giving the developers, the, you're actually forcing them to not to put trees. And, and that, that doesn't sound right to me. Now, the four, the five hundred dollars, Arturo, those five hundred dollars, they're, they're actually being brought to a, to a, to a, the city council for approval together with this? Or is that already approved?
The five hundred dollars is set by the, by the Parks Board, sir, by the, by, by this, by this specific code, sir. So, no, it hasn't gone to council, but it's set by the Parks Board.
You see, but we're giving that option. When you, when you buy a tree, you can get a tree for a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars, see? And, and by forcing the developer to, to comply with the amount of trees in the parking because of every ten parking, that gives us more trees, more green areas, entirely at a lower cost for the developer. So I do it and, and it's going to be cheaper than paying if I have a lot, even though you're telling me it's optional. So why are we going to give them an option? Let's just go ahead and let them comply with the, with the, with every tree for ten parking. That's my comment right there.
Okay. I would just add one little thing to, I mean, I, I generally am okay with the principle of this proposal. I, I think the thing, though, is that, like, like Kirby said, you know, the, the whole point of this is the trees, right? Like, in other words, putting the trees in places that they will be used, putting the trees in places that can be enjoyed by the community, which is be to add some kind of, you know, way of determining whether or not the money is actually being used to purchase those additional trees so that you can keep track of the number of trees that, that the developers didn't plant versus a number of trees that were planted because with the money paid in lieu of. I mean, if the purpose of this policy is to make sure that the trees are planted, then I would think there should be some kind of accountability to show that it's actually being done. But, I mean, that's just my thought.
As, as I understand, Commissioner, I, I, it's just, just establishing a tree fund, which I don't think is, if there's one right now. And I think that's what Councilman Martha was trying to, to do by, by initiating this change.
No, but I think Mr. Commissioner Flores brings up a good point because if you look at some of the things that we have later on in the agenda, we have some, we have several items showing commercial properties where you have zero trees. And this section of the land development code is supposedly been on the books for a while. But you can even look at item, the very first item on Rosson Lane that you don't see any trees anywhere. And, and so we do need some trees, but if we're going to have this on the books, might as well have some sort of enforcement on it. And, and I'm fine with not forcing people to have that many in the parking lot because they end up dying. They don't end up, it can be problem, problematic for, for the parking lot when you do the paving and everything. But there should be some sort of implementation of if we're taking money from development, let's use it for the same thing, not just taking money away from people. Well, I think their intent is to, like Arturo said, to create a, a fund, to have monies to plant trees, whether it's in a park or in a public right of way. I think at this point, you know, the key thing to this whole thing is establishing a fund is a good thing, but the planting of the tree.
the planting of the tree has got to be close to an area that has a an irrigation system for it to, you know, like, you know, you say here, public right of ways, and I think that's fine, but again, if we're going to put things in the public right of way, you know, it it it's got to be close to a park because it's got or or close to a facility where the city has a water meter to be able to water these things. The way I see this right now is, you know, it's up to somebody's discretion to say, well, I want trees on X Y Z area. But there's no way to get access to water. Those are the things that I see right now that I I see the fund is a good thing, but I think who's going to determine where the trees are going to go? The staff?
That would be parks, sir. That would be parks.
The parks board or the parks?
I'm not Parks Department, sir, I imagine. Like anything else, like this, this hasn't been used at all, as far as I can tell. But if we ever do, the building department would collect it as a fee. Obviously, we'd put it into the a particular fund that would be established. And then obviously, that 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 fund source would would fund whatever activities Parks is doing for the trees or that tree fund. So that's that's the way it would function in terms of process wise.
Let me ask you this.
And I think that's where the, I know Commissioner Diaz and Flores, their concern is, okay, if X Y Z developer gives you X number of dollars, where's the accountability where that money is going to be utilized or got utilized? I think that's what everybody's alluding to. And how is that going to be handled?
Yeah, Mr. Garcia.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Carlos?
Yeah, Mr. Garcia, if I may just briefly, yeah, I guess that would be my point, right? The point is like, you get the money in lieu of the tree. There's no tree now. Now we've got the money. Is that money going to be spent on a tree or is that money going to be spent to help the Parks Department pay for staff and things like that? And that actually result in a tree? Because then that would mean that, I mean, I don't know if that's the case. I'm not saying that's the case. I'm I'm just asking because then to me, that would mean that the policy is not working, right? Because if you're saying money for trees and like in Mr. Sideman's example, perfect. But how are we sure that that's actually going to occur?
That would be something managed by parks, sir. I wouldn't be able to tell you what it is or not. This commission can provide a recommendation that, you know, it just be for for trees as an example. I understand that they wanted to use it to possibly use for any expense related to the planting, for the planting of the tree also. So I I obviously, city resources would be used like labor wise, but sometimes you might need some separate cost to to plant it, like additional soil, as an example, or maybe, you know, buy some equipment like provide a recommendation on. And that's why we're here seeking your your, not only your support, but also your your recommendations on this change.
Real quick, Mr. Chairman, I think that we should leave the burden to the developer to comply with the requirements of planting the trees. Carlos has a very good point and Joy has a very good point. If you were to get the money and also plant it, even though we can have those stuff of trees that that can be used without water, like the Mexican olive, an example, those can be planted on right away and wouldn't have to worry too much about water. But there's no, there's no mechanics here as to to create the responsibility with the city to provide a tree for a tree. So that was a good point, Carlos. Joy, that was a good point. I will not, I will, I will leave the burden for the developers to continue and and go ahead and plant and and to provide for the trees that they're planting. I think that would be the best option.
You know, I mean, you make sense, sir, because I mean, the the intent of the ordinance on planting a tree in in parking lots was specifically to ensure that we had a canopy of some kind in each, instead of just blacktop. You know, we had a landscaping in a parking lot and not just asphalt or concrete or whatever. That's the intent of this ordinance. What this ordinance is being proposed is telling us what they want to do is, well, you know, I need more parking and I want to do less trees. But in reality, we need trees, you know, we really need trees to create the oxygen that we need in in the atmosphere. And to delay the planting of those trees, we don't know what time certain that could be, you know, it could be a year, it could be three years, three years. I mean, if you look at plaits where people put up letters of credit, there are letters of credit at the city that have been renewed over and over and over for years and years. And improvements have never been done. And I think that's some of the things that, what I'm seeing here, we need to kind of hash out. I I don't think this ordinance is ready to go forth, in my opinion, at this point. There is a lot of questions from the commission right now as to accountability. There's no timeframe for the planting of trees somewhere else. And I think that those are some things, in my opinion, that we should sort of nail down a little bit better. I mean, it's kind of open ended with with no real accountability. That's my opinion.
No problem, and so can we, Mr. Chairman, we can advise the Parks Department to provide that force?
Let's see if we can come up with a plan where, you know, we say, okay, if a developer is going to give money into an ordinance, into a fund, that that money has to be utilized within a year or something like that. And it's got to be, you know, you know, some kind of accountability to that money, because I know money can sit in funds for a long time and and that the money be used specifically for the purchasing of a tree, okay? If the Parks Department is going to plant them, then the money should be utilized strictly for the planting of that tree, whether that tree needs, like you said, additional soil, fertilizer, whatever it needs. But I think that also needs to be put in there, in my opinion.
That as well.
Yeah.
I think you need to, in the paragraph where it says, this money shall be placed in a special fund. I think the word special should be changed to a restrictive fund.
Yeah.
Designated for the purposes of planting the trees. And as far as the fee established by the tree board, the tree board doesn't have the authority under charter to establish any fee in the city. The fees are established by the city council. They can make a recommendation of what fee they want to charge, but they can't set the fee by themselves because fees are set up by ordinances.
Yeah. So I think, you know, right now, what I'm seeing here, Art, is this this particular ordinance that is being proposed, I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse because the five hundred dollar recommendation of fee for per tree has not been approved by council at this point. And I think like Commissioner Valina just stated, we need to have that established by council first. And then we do need to work on this particular wording a little bit more after the fee is established.
I think a lot of the questions that that some of the the other commissioners were talking about, if I understand what's going on here, like the way I think I do, these questions are already in play right now, whether we move forward with this decision or not. Because if I'm understanding correct, whether it's thirty percent today, fifty percent tomorrow, this already exists. And the fact that it already exists and those questions are still the same questions that exist today. If I was a developer today and I took advantage of this, I'm going to pay a fee of thirty percent. I don't know where my money is going to go. So I don't really think if we give a negative recommendation, it's going to solve that issue. And even if we give a positive recommendation, it's going to solve that issue either. The issue exists. And unfortunately, the the system that's in play as we speak right now, I guess what we've come to realize is flawed, whether today or tomorrow. So I don't know if we need to revisit this again and
I think you're on the right track. I think right now, what I'm seeing and from what I'm hearing from the commission members is that we probably should table this item. And it needs a little more work. There's things that have to be done by the city council, like establishing the fee per tree. And then this one is going to need a little bit more refining in terms of where the trees, how quickly the trees should be planted, where they should be planted and stuff like that. So my recommendation would be that we that we table this item at this point and work on it a little bit more, getting some better feedback on it that has more clarity. And I'm sure the commission members can certainly chime in and provide input, Arturo or or the staff that is writing this ordinance to kind of like work together to see if we can come up with something that works.
Well, one of my biggest inputs that that I I I like the idea of the of really increasing it to fifty percent because I think building and developing has to be done in an efficient way. I think certain parts of the city has better soil than others. And maybe it's not in the best interest to force certain trees to thrive in the it just, it's not going to survive and it's going to use up a lot of water versus other parts of the city that it'll a lot easier. But the the accountability, I I think it's very important. I I might not say that it has to be tree for tree because another idea that or suggestion that I have is that, you know, time is is priceless. It it, right now, they're required to buy a two inch trunk tree. By the time we ever see that into fruition, you're talking about twenty five years from now. I I would suggest let's speed up the process and and maybe instead of buying a tree for tree, why don't we buy a tree that's six inch trunk and, you know, as the time is very valuable. And if we can give the the our children more established trees for the price of, you know, four trees and we can get a ten year old, fifteen year old tree, well, let's do that instead because now they can they can benefit from a bigger tree and better shade versus having to risk a two inch tree actually surviving to it, you know, to become what it's going to become. So that's just my my only suggestion. That's all I really have to comment.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, could could I ask Kirby to to change the slide to the to what is being proposed? Because it it I just legally just texted me and telling me that the fund is restricted.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to table this item. I think the the item needs a lot of work. And I would recommend that a committee from from us, the commissioners, be in contact with Arturo so we can clear things up. But and and we can speed it. I mean, Arturo, the idea is not to delay it, but actually to to bring something that is appropriate, not only for the city, but also for the developers and the public in general. So I I would make a motion to table it, Mr. Chairman. I think we discussed it long enough. Not to cut it out, but I think that would be in the best interest. So a motion to table and probably create a a committee within the commissioners.
We got a motion. Do we have a second?
Just a reminder on the on the process here, it it will still go to city council, whether you want to have continued discussion on it. The the it's it met it's met its requirement by coming to the planning commission. If you want to provide this advice that you're providing, then it would be the city council who who would decide, hey, yeah, these issues, they're right. These issues need to be addressed. Let's not move forward with it or let's not change the the ordinance. So that feedback is helpful if you want to put that in the formal recommendation, but but stopping it and and tabling it would be a decision by council, not by the the planning commission. In other words, it's met its requirement by coming here and being brought before you, asking for your advice as it goes to the next step.
So then you're telling us that basically this commission, all they can do is tell you, change this word, change that word. But if the ordinance is, the commission doesn't feel meets what needs to happen in the community, then it's irrelevant. That's what you're saying. So then why in the hell do we even have it on here?
You you have it here because we want your advice. And that's what you you've given us a lot of good advice to, given the plant, the building director a lot of advice.
I I guess if if Mr. if Commissioner Dominguez would want to change his motion to give a negative recommendation because it's incomplete, needs a lot of work, and he can stress all the specific items that he thinks it's lacking, I would be more than happy to second his motion in giving a negative recommendation that it's an incomplete proposed amendment to the city ordinance.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to withdraw my my original recommendation and send a negative recommendation to city council on the basis that a lot of work needs to be added to this particular amendment. And that would be my motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second?
Yes, sir. Diaz second.
Commissioner Diaz. All right, all those who are in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Is there anybody who is against this particular motion? With none heard, the motion carries a recommendation to council is a negative one. The recommendation to council should read that the planning commission did not approve sending this forward to city council because it needs more work. That's what we need to make sure council understands.
Yes, and and more in depth than that, I'm going to ask the building director and and help them with it. That actually, the feedback you provided about the issues that you brought up also be brought to the city council. And I think those are all good issues that you brought up and those do need to be addressed.
Very good. Moving right along then. We're going to go back to item five A, which is pending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning lot fourteen, block two, Jackman Road, unit six, Jackman Commercial Park is located at seventy one twenty six Roson Lane from B four to B three. All right, Kirby, who's going to make this presentation?
I will, sir.
All right.
The applicant is Arena Apartments LLC. Property owner is Arena Apartments. And Joe Emma Sherfy is the engineer who is representative. You described the the property location and the zone change. Just to repeat it, is from B four, which is our highway commercial district to B three, which is community business district. And the proposed use is multifamily. And they're down zoning from B four to B three so that they can do the they can have the legal conforming use of the apartments there. We sent out eleven letters to surrounding neighbors. We received zero for and zero against. It's located in the eastern side of the city. And the lot contains the existing structure already, apartments. Here's a view of the apartment structure, Arena Apartments. And this is the view of the current zoning. You can see it's all B four in that area, except for a B three across the street, kitty corner. And here is the future land use map, designating this area as mixed use. Staff supports the recommendation. It's in performance with the future land use map. It complies with the B three requirements. Proposed use is compatible and and the zone change won't adversely impact conditions. It's a it's a down zone, so it's going to be it's less intense should they decide in the future to ever do anything different, but their intent is not, is to remain apartments. Here's the proposed motion. When you're ready, sending a recommendation to council, to either approve or deny. And here is the phone number for citizens' comments. I'll leave that up there and we should have the engineer on the phone. Is that correct, Amanda?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, we do have Ms. Joe Emma Sherfy on the line. If there's any questions from the commission.
Oh, I see. And I just got the public calls up the phone.
This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor or against, so put whoever's on the phone on.
Okay, Ms. Sherfy, go ahead.
So yeah, Joe Emma Sherfy was Sherfy engineer representing the client. We are rezoning it basically to add an addition, an additional apartment building there. And under the current B four zone, it was not allowed. So if y'all have any questions?
Does anybody in the commission have any questions for Ms. Sherfy? Okay, thank you very much for your comment. There, this is a public hearing. Anybody else on the line who's wishing to speak for or against? There uh, this is a public hearing. Anybody else on the line is wishing to speak for or against?
If we receive any calls, we it we will let you know, but it looks like we have not received any calls.
That's right, Mr. Chairman. Um, there's no calls at the moment.
There's no calls. We'll give it another twenty seconds. All right, no other calls on the line. And what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing and uh support the staff recommendation for the down zone to B three, not advise.
And while the second said motion, all those who are in who are not in favor of this motion signify by saying aye, who are not in favor. With none heard, motion carries. Thank you. Next item, public hearing amending the zoning ordinance in the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately two point five seven acre tract, outlined uh being out of the Portion thirty seven. Uh, and this is uh located south of Sierra Vista, East of Ajiro Avenue from R three to R one M H. All right, Kirby?
The applicant is Vimosa Text Gen. He was the owner applicant, Horst Nance Engineering is representative. You described the property and location. Again, this is a R threes, they're requesting to go from R three to R one M H, single family manufactured housing district. The proposed use is manufactured housing. We we mailed out sixteen letters. We received zero for and zero against. It's located in the southern part of the city. This is the aerial, uh, an aerial view. A street view of the property. You can see a vacant portion. And this is the current zoning. You can see that it is R three and it's surrounded by R one M H. And here is the future land use map showing this area as a mix of neighborhood mixed use, but also including the high density residential to the west, which is the yellow. Staff supports the proposed zone change. It's in conformance with the future land use map. It it complies with the requirements of the R one M H zone. And it's compatible with the surrounding uses. That's a typo. It says industrial, but it's it's compatible with the surrounding uses. And we don't think the zone change will adversely impact the neighborhood. Here's the proposed motion to recommend approval or denial to council when you're ready. And the phone number for the public to call in.
All right.
Have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions on this particular zone change from the commission? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak for or against? Do we have anybody on the line?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, we do have Mr. Wayne Nance, who's available to answer any questions from the commission.
All right, put him on.
Okay, Wayne, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is Wayne and uh yes, this is the last piece of the puzzle in L A N. It's surrounded by R one M H and we were just going to finish this one out. We agree with the 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 recommendation and we hope you all do too. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Is everybody, is there anybody else on the line who would like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, at the moment, we don't have any calls, any public comments.
Okay. All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
This day is make a motion to close public hearing, support staff's recommendation and approve the zone change.
Second.
Seconds this motion. All those who are not in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. With none heard, motion carries. Thank you. Next item, a public hearing amending the zoning uh ordinance map of the city of Laredo by rezoning lot one A, block two. Replat Lago del Mar, Unit Nine, located at seventy six fourteen Country Club Drive from R two to uh R B, R one B. Okay, Kirby?
Yes, the applicant is Shashi Baswani Arms Limited. Who is the property owner and the representative is Sherfy Engineering. You described the property location description. Again, it's they're going from requesting to go from R two, which is multifamily, to R one B, which is a single family, high density. The proposed use is residential. We mailed out thirteen letters. We received zero for and zero against. This is located on the northern side of the city. Here's an aerial view of the property. Access would be off Country Club Drive. Here is an aerial view of the pro, I mean, a street view of the property. Here is the current zoning. You can see the yellow is R two. Uh, the red outline highlights the property. And it is surrounded, it's R two, but it's surrounded by B three, R S M, and D one to the west. Here is a view of the future land use map. You can see it's the pink, which is medium density residential, and it's surrounded by high density and maybe the mixed use residential. Staff supports the proposed zone change. It's in conformance with the comprehensive plan designation of the areas between density. It's compatible with uses in the area and we don't believe that the zone change will adversely affect the surrounding neighbors. Here's the proposed motion. When you're ready to send a recommendation to council or approval or denial. And the citizen comments or the the number of the public can call in should they have any comments.
All right, this is a public hearing. Uh, anybody wish to speak for or against?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, we do have Ms. Joaime Sherfy on the line for any questions for on for the commission.
Okay, put her on.
Okay, Ms. Sherfy.
Joe I'm a Sherfy, representing the client, uh, if y'all have any questions.
Does anybody in the commission have any questions for Ms. Sherfy? Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Sherfy. Is there anybody else on the line who wishes to speak for or against?
Mr. Chairman, there's no one on the line at the moment for public comments.
Thank you. All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve, Chairman, allowing the staff recommendation.
Motion. Do you need a second? All right. All those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. With none heard, motion carries. Thank you. Next item. Item six, review consideration of the following master plans. Uh, six A, review and reconsideration of the D and J Alexander Master Plan, intended residential and commercial. The proposed, the purpose of this revision is the reconfiguration of uh phase fifteen.
Mr. Vidiari?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, for the record, refined overview, the applicant is D and J Investments LLC. Engineer of record is Premier Civil Engineering, eight hundred, approximately eight hundred ninety eight acres, located south of Del Mar and northwest of Casa de la Road. The zoning of this fourteen seventy four lot development is R one, R two, B two, and B three. The proposed use is residential and commercial. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed master plan. Comments from planning. Traffic safety. Additional comments from traffic safety. Parks and leisure and comments from water utilities. Uh, water utilities, these items from water utilities are underlying. They were provided uh to the engineer, but were not included in the packet.
There you will see this on on several items and it was due to an illness in the person who's reviewing, so. And we contacted all the engineers on this. So that comment that Rafa just made is the same for all the underlying comments for water and utilities you'll see on additional items.
Okay.
And the proposed motion.
All right. Do we have the engineer of record on the line?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, we have Mr. Gutierrez on the line.
All right.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Uh, good evening, uh, chairman and commissioners. And welcome to the record, the premier engineering. We agree with the comments presented. The only, uh, I would like to comment on on traffic department's comments nine and twelve. Um, comment number nine. Um, the um, they want us to connect with emergency alignment for the connection to unit eighteen. Unit eighteen was recorded last year and the souls were not, uh, the the lots were sold to individuals to build homes. So we can't uh comply with that comment for that reason. Um, and then unit twelve, the way we understand it is we have to eliminate the cause at the west, the most side of the uh, unit thirty two to connect to University. The problem with that is that our connection would be a hundred feet from the existing intersection of Casa de la Universidad. And that is not safe, so we wouldn't be complying on on that. And or maybe I'm misunderstanding the comment, but that's the way I understand it, the way it reads.
Okay, well, maybe we can have some clarity from uh Dan McGee.
Mr. McGee?
Unmute him.
He may be having some technical difficulties. Let me.
He's muted.
Okay, sorry about that. It was having problems.
Okay.
Okay, um, these comments came from our staff. I'm I'm not a hundred percent familiar with it. Um, if you want to table it, we can try and work this out with Mr. Uh, with the with the developer. Um, I'll have to look into these. I'm sorry?
We don't want to table it, Danny. Um, I don't know if you can hear me, but uh we we can go in with your department to figure out what's what, but the way it reads, we can't comply. Uh, we're not saying that we won't do something to improve the situation.
Okay, uh, I just I just wish you had made an attempt to contact me about this before today's meeting and we could have worked it out. But if you if you want to want to table it and you feel we can work it out, I have no problem with that.
Okay, okay.
So just just for the record, these comments are published and provided and sent out to all the engineers. So so the engineer on this received these comments last Friday when we put them out. That Danny's right, that would have been good to contact if he he saw these comments from traffic didn't agree with them. Could have contacted the traffic and say, hey, I don't I don't agree with this. We try to do the same as well when we when we're, you know, we make sure we get these comments out and if there's something that's going to be controversial, we want to work it out with the engineer beforehand. We can try, if you want to describe it, uh I'm sorry, Rafa, this is, is this Eddie on the phone?
I'm here, yes.
If you want to describe what you're not what you don't agree with Dan on, then maybe he can uh you can have that discussion here or Commissioner, if you'd like. You can also do this uh, table this and bring it back. How would you like to proceed, Commissioner?
Well, I think if we can take care of it right now with maybe Dan looking at it uh and and uh as Eddie explaining to Dan what his concern is, whether maybe we can get it resolved.
Let's start with the comment number twelve. It's connect unit connect unit thirty two to the university and Eddie said that that's not safe and he doesn't want to do it. So let's take a look at unit thirty two. So that's right here. And the comment was to connect this to university. So right now it ends in a cul-de-sac. So they come all the way in through here, ends in a cul-de-sac. And what what traffic department asked was that this actually be a connection in to university. And the comment from the engineer was that that's not safe.
It's too close to the intersection with Casa de la, it's about a hundred feet, a hundred and twenty feet maybe. And I think Dan would have a problem with that.
I- i- it's hard to tell from this this right here. I would have to go out and look at it in the field and 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 see what other plans are there. Are there? So, but like I said, if we can.
Configuration that that then we can work out that that would suffice the the intent.
Okay.
What what do you what do you expect or something?
All right.
So you're okay with the comment number twelve being stricken, Dan?
Uh, not at this time. I don't have enough information. I mean, that that was done by staff and I and I'm I'm sure they have a reason. I need to go back and ask them. And then I can look into myself. I just didn't not have a chance to look at these.
Okay. And comment number nine, we recommend to connect unit thirty one and twenty eight on the South Street for better flow and exit to Bartlett and close the street where lots one and nineteen of unit thirty one are to eliminate site distance issue. Eddie, what was your issue with this?
Well, the issue is that unit eighteen is uh, I've been uh planning, it was there last year, it was recorded and the lots were sheltered, individuals wanted to go home. To realign the streets, uh, going out would be impossible to control them anymore.
Kirby, I, yeah, I think it's kind of, I'll be hesitant to approve anything right now. Like, as the staff looked at this and they have reasons for it. So if they're on there, I'm sure they had a good reason. I'd have to go back and talk to them about it and then we can meet with Eddie and discuss those. But to do it right here, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing it.
Well, Commissioner, uh, however you want to take this, the applicant does not want to table this and um the traffic director doesn't want to strike those comments.
All right, um, okay. In that case, does anybody in the commission have any questions about these two particular concerns?
May, I can also say that having worked with Dan now a couple of years, if there is an issue here, he'd be, he's not going to hold to these. He will work with an applicant, an engineer, to find the best solution. If the engineer is willing to do the same, um, we can let this go on the official record, but um you know, he he's always been amenable to find a good solution.
I I have a good relationship with Eddie. I know him very well. I I think we can try and find something. So I will leave the comments in and then like it like Kirby said, if if I can strike them later on, that's fine.
Yeah, we can leave the comments. I I I'm just saying we can't comply because it's possible, but if I can show you, Danny, and the next thing is that the reason why we can't comply and then you agree, then, you know, it's just not doable.
Right. This is just a very congested and very busy and growing area. And that's the reason I hesitate to make a quick rash decision.
So can we make a motion to approve with the comments?
Well, you can make a motion to approve with the comments or you can make a motion to approve subject to those comments being worked out and if they're not, that just come back. I mean, there's all kinds of things that can be done here.
I guess I make a motion to approve with the comments.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? By the Valina, all those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Next item.
Just to comment on that process so that everybody can feel at ease. The preliminary process, this is more like a this is an opportunity for everyone to know where we're at. This is an opportunity for the engineer to know where the city's coming from. For the city to know where the engineer is coming from. The real approving authority is when it goes to final and the engineer has to get a a letter from the traffic engineer, from the traffic department director who who says, yes, you can proceed with this plan. And so it's final, that's the real, that's the real point where you have to be, you know, when you approve that, that's what's going to get on the books, in other words. I just want to make you feel comfortable about that process that they'll continue to work on.
And so, batting a thousand, Kirby, we've always found an agreement, so.
Okay, great, great. All right, next item, review and consideration of Los uh Adeles subdivision master plan, intended residential mobile home lots.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, we did see, receive written correspondence uh from the engineer to have this item tabled time certain.
Very good. Do we have a motion to table? Can we have a motion?
Time certain, not advise.
Advice, second? Second by Lou, all those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Motion carries, tabled. All right, next item. Review and consider and review and reconsideration of the San Isidro Southwest Antler Crossing Master Plan, intended residential and the commercial. Purpose of the reconsideration is to reconfigure a portion of phase one into a new phase five. All right?
The applicant is San Isidro Southwest Limited, engineer of record, highly engineer and survey. Approximately a hundred and twenty four acres located south of San Isidro Parkway and west of Springfield Road. The zoning for this development is B four, R one A, and R one B. The proposed use is residential and commercial and the proposed number of lots is approximately five hundred and thirty. The proposed use is residential and commercial, and the proposed number of lots is approximately five hundred and thirty. General location, aerial view, street view, and the proposed master plan.
Hey, Rafa, can you show us what he's asking for in terms of, of this particular request?
Absolutely. Off to the, to the north, which would make it to the, to the right of the drawing, you see this new Phase Five. This was originally one large platted, platted lot. So now he's going to bring in, uh, this Phase Five, which he's gonna, they're gonna do as, uh, commercial lots, the smaller ones on, along Springfield and the larger ones along San Isidro Parkway.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Do we have the engineer of record on the phone?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, we have Mr. Villarreal on the line. Um, should commissioners have any questions for Mr. Villarreal?
Put him on.
Yes, hello, uh, the guy probably had that with how late it's been, we have for the client, just wanted to see if anybody had any questions.
Does anybody in the commission have any questions for Engineer Villarreal? You're okay with the comments, uh, Rick?
Yes, sir.
All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve, uh, with the comments, not advice.
Okay, do we have a second? Second, say motion, all those who are in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Next item, consideration of the following preliminary plats and preliminary replats. Item seven eight, preliminary consideration of the plat of Cuatro Vientos East Wright Ranch, uh, subdivision Phase Nine, intended residential.
The applicant is Forb Holdings Limited. The engineer of record is Porras Nance Engineering. Approximately twelve point eight acres located west of Cuatro Vientos Road and north of Wright Ranch Boulevard. The zoning for this development is R one A, proposed use residential, the proposed number of lots is seventy. General location, aerial view, street view, the proposed plat, comments from planning, engineering, and traffic safety, parks and leisure, utility coordination and water utilities, and additional comments from water utilities, and the proposed motion.
Okay. Do we have the engineer of record on?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, we have Mr. Nance on the line. Should commissioners have any questions for Mr. Nance? Mr. Nance?
Hello, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is Wayne with Porras Engineering. Would you agree with all the comments except for traffic item number one? They, uh, I just can't comply with that. The geometry of the adjacent, uh, unit that's originally built doesn't allow for, for that kind of a minimum straight section on a few of those streets. We're complying with the approved master plan. We're just basically putting back what's in the master plan. So, uh, we, we just can't, we can't give you that traffic item number one, and we're asking that that be stricken.
All right, now, we got Dan McGee on there. Dan?
Mr. McGee?
He's muted.
Well, Mr. Chairman, uh, so look, if it goes like it, it did on the other items, uh, that, um, you know, I'm sure that he's not going to be prepared to move on something like this. I just needed notice for the record, and we just cannot comply with that item. It, it just, it doesn't work. And so we'll work with him at the one stop shop. Um, if, if that's fine with you guys, I just please note that on the, on the meeting minutes. Because I want to promise you something we can't deliver.
All right. Okay. Um, does anybody in the commission have any questions for Mr. Nance? All right, if he has no questions, then he does have a.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, this is Ugala. I would like to hear from the traffic director. He should have been prepared for the meeting.
I'm here, sir.
Okay. Kirby, would you inform him of the comment?
Yes, and the comment one is streets must intersect perpendicular at a minimum of two hundred feet. And the, I don't know the measurements here, but I'm assuming any one or all of these don't, uh, they're not spaced more than two hundred feet. Is that correct? Uh?
Well, two, two, two hundred feet is kind of what we're shooting for, but we could probably go down to about a hundred feet. We're having a lot of problems with intersections where because of parked cars and bushes, you cannot see, and it's, we're getting a lot of, uh, a lot of complaints around town, and we're having to go out there and, and try to re-stripe and put signs and stuff up because those kind of intersections are causing a lot of problems.
So if I can explain this a little more, the, the subdivision ordinance, Rafa, says that we have to have two hundred feet between an intersection. Is that correct, Rafa?
That is correct.
So for example, these, these two, I don't know if you, you can see, there's three streets here that run east and west. These three streets aren't spaced more than two hundred feet apart. Is that correct? Uh, Mr. Nance, do you know what those are? Those streets are measured at? Separation?
Yeah, I don't, I guess I can tell you. What, what they're looking for is very long tangents before the intersection. Uh, this is not even the ordinance though. I want to point that out. We, we sent you, Kirby, uh, a, a checklist of things that just, you know, that, that, that we have grievances with constantly. And, uh, this is one that really needs to be complied with because it just seems to be arbitrarily applied. It doesn't have an ordinance behind it. What they're looking for is long tangents as you approach the intersection. And so what they want is both of those curved streets that you see in the middle of that, all have tangent sections, straight lines before they intersect with the adjacent streets for two hundred feet. We don't have, geometrically, it's just not there. And the subdivision to the south of that is already built. And we're basically re, this was an approved master plan. Uh, you know, and so, you know, those choices were made a long time ago. And, uh, I'm just being asked to comply with something I just can't, I can't give it to you. It just geometrically is not there.
Matt, 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 respond.
Once again, I just want to say, look, I, we're, we're willing to work with you, but I just can't tell you I'm going to give you something, and what I can't do it.
Can I respond to this, Mr. McGee?
Sure.
Okay, fir- first of all, ordinances are, are there to give guidance. If, if everything was put in ordinances, you wouldn't need engineers and notices. Everything would be cookbook.
Well, the ordinance is here, Dan.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm talking about coming in tangents. He's talking about that. But i- i- it's, it's folly to keep following, uh, practices that have gotten us in trouble. I mean, the, the, the statistics speak for themselves, accidents, the complaints. Uh, and the same, same comment I had with the previous engineer. If he knew he had these comments coming to P and C, he would have to meet up with the commie and trying to work these out. Why does he want to come in and discuss them here? Uh, we, we don't have the time, uh, to, to do an in-depth analysis. Uh, same thing with Mr. Nance. I've worked with him many, many times and always found agreements. But I don't think this is the right, uh, area to be doing these kind of things. So if he wants to table it, we can look at it. I'm sure we can work something out. But to make decisions that has already looked at, and then just overturn them, I don't think that's, that's fair to their decision-making or mine.
We do not want to table this. Uh, we would just please, like, we, we want the meeting minutes to, to represent, but we just can't comply with that. And we'll move forward to the one stop shop. Uh, the comments have been out for everybody to review, and, uh, we're just to point that out.
But please, please in the future, Wayne, come see me about it. I mean, I, I don't have a chance to look at every single one of the details of these things. And this is your project, and just bring it to my attention.
Okay, all right. Does anybody in the commission have any questions on this?
Well.
All right, if not, go ahead, Kirby.
If I can, this one, I think, might be a little more challenging to just work out. I mean, Dan, the case that he's making about it's on an approved master plan, and, and this neighborhood already has, I mean, the, the, if you're going to stick to that, too, are you saying you could go down from that two hundred feet? But as it said, I mean, you probably would have to eliminate lots significantly in order to, to have enough space. What, Mr. Nance, what is the other?
The goal, the goal would be to preserve the lots as he has them and everything. And, and it may be a matter of just doing some mitigation with traffic, you know, signs and sign striping and whatever else. But we need to look at side distances and, and, um, but like I said, I'm sure we can work it out.
Okay, so you're not opposed to lay out, but there may be some traffic mitigation that needs to happen. Uh, Mr. Nance, is that acceptable?
I understand, I understand. Yes, that's fine.
Okay, very good. What are the wishes of the commission?
I got, uh, this is Commissioner Lou. I just want to confirm, uh, what, what, what was the, the stance on, on the applicant again? Are, are they okay with tabling it, or do they want to?
No, we, we do not want to table it. You go ahead and, please approve it, but as, on each other's meeting minutes, we'll represent what we stated today.
Okay, well, uh, with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve with, uh, staff comments.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Advice.
Okay, we have a second. All those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Next item, preliminary consideration of the Valvi plat, intended industrial.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is Alejandro Valdez. The engineer of record is Daniel Gomez Engineering. Approximately one point four acres. For this development is M two. The proposed use is industrial, and the proposed number of lots is one. General location, aerial view, street view, the proposed plat, comments from planning, engineering, environmental, and traffic safety, utility coordination, and water utilities, and the proposed motion.
Okay, do you have the engineer record on?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, we have Mr. Daniel Gomez. Um, Mr. Gomez?
Yes, Dr. Daniel Gomez, the engineer, uh, for this project. And we concur with the, uh, with, uh, all the comments. We'll, we will be complying with everything.
Okay, I, I do have a question for you. Uh, the one point four acres, in looking at the floodway, uh, that goes through this property, that means about half of it is usable? Is that what you got here?
Yes, the floodway, it's, it's on, on the property.
So I guess about half of it is usable out of the one point four acres, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else in the commission have any questions for the engineer of record? All right, then what are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to approve with staff's comments.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Next item, preliminary consideration of the replat of Lot twenty-two, Lot two, Los Altos subdivision, into Lot twenty-two A and twenty-two B, Lot two, Los Altos subdivision, intended residential.
The applicant is Hector and Pedro Arizben. The engineer of record is T C Engineers and Consultants. Approximately eighteen thousand, uh, nineteen thousand square feet located north of State Highway fifty-nine and east of the city of Laredo landfill. The zoning for this two lot development is not applicable as this tract is located outside of the city limits. The proposed use is residential, and the proposed number of lots is two. General location, aerial view, street view, the proposed plat, comments from planning, engineering, water utilities, and from water utilities.
Rafa, can you please explain why this is outside the city limits but still needs to come to the City of Laredo Planning Commission?
Absolutely. So this, uh, subdivision is located, uh, in Los Altos, which is on the fringe of the current city limits in one of the colonias. And because it is in the ETJ, the extraterritorial jurisdiction, there is actual dual authority with regards to plats with the county and the city. So as the county, I mean, since the city is also the water and sewer provider in the area, it has to get approval from both entities, both the city as well as the county. So they, starting out with the city first at this time.
Thank you, Rafa.
All right, do we have the engineer record on?
I'm unsure, Mr. Chairman, if the engineer would be available. Uh, he might not have been, but he did send written correspondence that he did agree with the staff comments.
Okay, very good then. What are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve, subject to the following comments, not advice.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, please.
The second, all those who are in favor of the motion, um, who are not in favor of the motion, I'm sorry, signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Next item is preliminary consideration of Lago del Valle, Phase two A, right-of-way dedication. Uh, the intent is a right-of-way aerial road project. Okay.
The applicant is Santa Fe Web LLC, engineer of record, creative engineering. Approximately one point three acres located east of Cuatro Vientos Road and south of State Highway fifty-nine. The zoning for this development is R one and R one A. The proposed use for the intent is right-of-way, and it's no loss, just right-of-way only. General location, aerial view, street view, and the proposed plat. Comments from planning and utility coordination, water utilities, and the proposed motion.
Okay. Any questions from the commission members? If not, what are the wishes of the commission? Move to approve. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, seconds. All those who are not in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Next item, preliminary consideration of the replat of Lots five and Lot six A and Lot seven A Block one Encino Plaza subdivision, Unit two A into Lots five A, Lot six B, and seven B Block one Encino Plaza subdivision, Unit two A, intended is commercial.
The applicant is Encino Plaza Limited. Engineer of record is Premier Engineering and Surveying. Approximately five and three quarters acres located south of Delmar Boulevard and west of Pearson Road. The zoning is B three and B four. The proposed use is commercial, and the proposed number of lots is three. General location, aerial view, street view, the proposed plat, comments from planning, utility coordination, watering utilities, and the proposed motion.
All right, do you have the engineer of record on the line?
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to get ahold of him. Um, I could not reach him right now at the moment. He did not answer.
Okay. Any questions for the commission? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
This day is to make a motion to approve subject to the comments.
A motion. Do we have a second? Second. Second by the Valina. All those who are not in favor of this motion signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Next item, preliminary consideration of the plat of B and J, Alexander Phase fifteen, Alexander Crossing Plaza, uh, Lot five. Alexander Crossing Plaza, uh, Lot five, Block one and Lot five, Block two, the intent is commercial.
The applicant is D and J Investments LLC, engineer of record, premier civil and civil engineering. Five point twenty-three acres located west of D and J Alexander subdivision Unit twenty. The zoning for this development is B one and B three, the proposed use is commercial, and the proposed number of lots is two. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. Uh, we do ask, uh, that we strike, uh, comment number one with regards to, uh, the street. And we're gonna be resolving, or the street name will be resolving that with the with the engineer of record. We spoke to them earlier about it. Engineering, traffic safety, utility coordination. And water utilities. And the proposed motion.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I have Mr. Gutierrez on the line.
All right.
Good evening, uh, Commissioners, I, I, we are in agreement with the amended comments. I do have a comment on the plat notes. Uh, plat note number six, we voluntarily put it there, we stopped giving access to put it there. We are, we thought that the, um, proposed use was gonna be office space. And we thought that it was a good idea to share driveways with the adjoining adjoining businesses and to have, uh, cross traffic between them. The client is telling me that the intended use is now multifamily apartments. So, each of those two lots would have anywhere from thirty to forty apartment units. That being the case, and we're coming in from a local street, not not a arterial or a, it's a local street. Um, we want the client to have the ability to have their own driveway for the apartments. And not have to share with like a Pizza Hut or gas station or something, you know, to have to come to that business to get into the apartment. So, we would like to request that that note be removed and not appear on the final plat.
There's no requirement that, there's nothing that would not allow you to change that plat note moving forward. That's not one of the comments of staff.
Okay, we're good, sir.
That was, that was, in other words, that was a self-imposed comment by by the by you, the engineer, if you wish to remove that. There's no, there's no problem with staff on that. That will be the final.
Okay, all right. Any questions from staff, from, uh, commission to the staff or the engineer? All right, then what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve subject to the following comments, striking, uh, planning comment number one.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those who are not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Next item, preliminary consideration of the Doug Stanley plat, the intent is commercial.
The applicant is Doug Stanley, the engineer of record is Ricardo Ramos. Approximately four acres located south of FM fourteen seventy-two and west of Coal Mine Road. The zoning for this development is R one, the proposed use is commercial, the proposed number of lots is one. General location. Aerial view. Street view. And the proposed plat. Comments from planning. Engineering and utility coordination. And water utilities. And proposed motion.
All right, do you have the engineer of record?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, we have Mr. Gomez on the line. Should commissioners have any questions for Mr. Gomez? Mr. Gomez?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Ricardo Ramos, with two right engineers, and I reviewed the staff comments and I agree with them.
Okay. Does anybody in the commission have any questions? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Commissioner Lugo, I'll make a motion to approve subject to the following comments.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second. All right, well, the second, those who are not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Next item, preliminary consideration of the replat of Lot one nineteen Block three, San Isidro Southwest, Antler Crossing Phase one into Lots one nineteen A and one through one nineteen F Block three, Antler Crossing Phase five, the intent is commercial. Okay.
The applicant is San Isidro Southwest Limited, the engineer of record is Howland Engineering and Surveying. Approximately thirty-one point sixty-six acres located southwest of San Isidro Parkway and Springfield Avenue. The zoning for this development is B four, the proposed use is commercial, and the proposed number of lots is six. General location. Aerial view. Street view. And the proposed plat. Comments from planning and engineering. Traffic safety and utility coordination. And water utilities. And the proposed motion.
Okay, is the engineer of record on?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Villarreal is on the line. Mr. Villarreal?
Yes. Uh, hi, Ricardo Villarreal, Howland Engineering, representing the client, and just here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
I also concur, concur with the comments.
All right, any questions from the commission members? With none heard, what are the wishes of the?
Move to approve, subject to the conditions.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Commissioner Lugo, second.
We have a second, all those who are not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. All right, the next item is a consideration of the following preliminary and final plats. I believe we might be able to take items eight A, I'm sorry, nine A, B, C. Um, and probably item ten, ten A and ten B. Uh, as a whole. If somebody's willing to make that motion and to take them all together. If not, we can hear them one by one. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those who are not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. Now we need a motion to approve them.
Commissioner Lugo, I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, is there a second? Second by Valde, all those who are not in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. None heard, motion carries. The last item that we have is, uh, number eleven, it's, uh, consideration of an extension following the final plats and final replats. Uh, for Lot three Block one, Bazan subdivision plat, the intent is industrial. Okay.